But people were in there.
Are we ready?
We are.
Okay, all right, we're going to call the town commission meeting to order Tuesday, May 14th. Can we call the roll, please, Renee?
We need to pledge allegiance.
Yeah, we'll do that first. Got it. Pledge allegiance. Now, roll call, please, Renee.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Canfield.
Here.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Let it also be known present is our town manager Greg Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Trey Nazaro. With absent with notice is Mayor Morgan and myself is also present.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting of April 12, 2024. Are there any comments or changes from the commission?
I'll move to a group.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda today?
No, sir, I just have, I'm going to add one announcement under the announcements.
Okay.
At the end.
All right, just one additional announcement from the town manager. You'll see in item six, the regular commission meetings all the way through October 11th. And then item seven is going to be communication from the public. Would anybody from the public like to speak today?
Yes.
Do you want to wait till the end or do it now?
I'll just go ahead and announce.
Okay, go ahead.
So it seems like I end up doing this about every six months with respect to our town clerk, who I now believe you are the past president of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerk.
I am the immediate past president, yes.
The immediate past president. So she couldn't just leave well enough alone. So now she is the vice president for the state of Florida Municipal Clerks Association, right?
Yes, sir.
So we certainly have somebody that has a lot of ambition and is a hard worker. And so what that means as the vice president now, next year, we'll be announcing that she's the president. So.
President-elect. And it's an honor because it's nominated by my peers, so.
Awesome, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. Communication from the public. If anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item, you have a maximum of three minutes per person.
Sure, thank you.
If you can state your name for the record as well.
Sure. Good morning. Public servants at Town of Gulfstream. My name's Mickey Isaacson. I live in Palm Beach County. Thank you for letting me speak here today. I read your ordinance from the Town of Gulfstream meeting in 1926. There was a clear path to fair and honest elections at that time in your municipality. You elected your officers instead of tapping them into place. The term of service, qualifications to hold positions, certifying your voter rolls, and certifications of elections results were a very different process than you have today. Today, you have public servants in place for 46 years, and your certification is done through the supervisor of election, who is certifying your elections with 30 voter rolls, no chain of custody for ballots, and who allows the U.S. Postal Service to tamper with the U.S. mail, which is federal offense. I don't know if any of you have watched any of the elections, but that's what's happening over there. Wendy Ling violates the statutes every time she uses the postal bins to transport mail and ballots. Did you know that the statutes are for the government to be governed? We, the people, are awake, and we are watching you. We are watching all 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County. We are looking at budgets, how you tap in your servants, how you belong to illegal organizations, how you have ignored the U.S. Constitution by selecting, by the selection of officials, instead of we, the people, choosing. That's in the Constitution. How you allow legislators to change our organic Florida state constitution. They remove the county, we have a county charter which needs to be removed. The Florida League of Cities, who in turn belong to the National League of Cities, all of these agencies are illegal. Are these tied to the crown that is in one-party rule for the top-down to the states? You are accountable for all that you do and do not do. We are here to help you know better and do better. This year, we are electing our U.S. president. Do the right thing and make our cities, counties, state, and national officials accountable. May God bless you and be with all of us to restore the republic. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on a non-agenda item? Yes.
Good morning. My name is Candace Rojas. I reside right across the bridge with all of the rest of the poor people. However, Facebook says when I check in, I'm part of Gulfstream, which is a little strange. But I'm here today to put you on notice as a sovereign American and request your oath of office and your bond, which is step one to activate our military. The Constitution states that all of power, not some of the power, belongs to we, the people. It also states that fraud vindicates everything, ab initio. I'm here today to boldly intercede for those without a voice, defend the Constitution, and restore the republic. Be prepared for 1776 peace and prosperity that's going to be happening soon. If you've not already heard, there's a changing of the old guard, which I believe is you, and a paradigm shift that's taking place all across the nation. No more generational political nepotism, no more secret societies controlling the masses, no more appointed board members via the tap from a secret society handshake, no more selected politicians who answer to plutocrats. Speaking of plutocrats, you obey billionaire handlers such as your former mayor Coke, who was in 1966, he was appointed, and then he served as mayor for 46 years. The fake facade of power and control with fake leaders is over. Did you know that the Palm Beach County is an illegal foreign corporation called the Palm Beach County Charter? There are 200 pages of Home Rule Charter, and the Town of Palm Beach is part of such charter. So basically, the Town of Palm Beach creates your own rules. You impose regulation and fines on your constituents. You do what you want, when you want, with no accountability. The Town of Gulfstream is a member of League of Cities, which is a conflict of interest as your true role, which is an employee of we, the people. You attend training at the League of Cities meetings with a globalist agenda and a connection to the United Nations and World Economic Forum. You are not transparent, and you have no accountability to anyone. Boxes are currently guarding the hen house. You charge illegal taxes and fines, and you use your own property appraisers to keep your own properties nice and low the actual value. Great job. You do not follow the Constitution or common law. You're operating under military law. You follow fake statutes that benefit your own narrative. Therefore, each of you, whether you're elected, appointed, selected, or staff, have no valid or legal oath. God bless America.
Thank you. Anybody else on a non-agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
There is, excuse me, just one moment. There's a blue vehicle Subaru that's parked across the street on private property and in the process of having it towed. So you might want to move it, okay? I don't know whose vehicle it is. Thank you.
All right, thanks, chief.
Hi, guys.
Yes.
I'm Jeff Buongiorno, live at 3851, right across the street. Last cycle, I ran for U.S. Congress against Brian Mast as a kind of a information gathering mission. And since then, I worked on the trilogy of an HBO documentary. The first one was released in 2006. It was called Hacking Democracy. So I really feel bad for you guys. We've been to the county like 150 times and pleading our cases on what's going on, and they're just blind to us. So unfortunately, I know you guys didn't sign up for this. The heat's going to be turned up. I'm working with an organization called Our Country, Our Choice, and it's headed by Colonel McGregor. He was a Trump appointee. And the first thing I want to point out is that ballot harvesting in the state of Florida is illegal. And I hear, I have here as evidence a text message to Rep. Mike Caruso, where I said, Mike, a Haitian couple approached me and offered a deal. For $85,000, they would make sure I won the primary, that they have access to all the Haitians and will door knock, and I will get their vote. And he answers, yeah, they do that. Tracy did not play in her city election in Delray. Tracy got no Haitian vote. She lost. So that begs the question, did Mike Caruso pay these guys? Is that how he stays in power? I don't know. But we have a problem. This, I sent this text while he was negotiating the resign-to-run bill. Okay, and there were other terrible items in that bill. One where we have this whole new form of, can you let me know when I have one minute? We have this whole.
A minute and a half.
We have this whole new form of ID that they're accepting, and it's creating a separate class of citizen, where you're allowed to use the last four digits of a social security number to register to vote. And there's a federal law called HAB, as part of HABLA, is Help America Verify Voters. So a person can register through the federal database using four digits of a social security number. That gets passed through to the county. No one asks any question. Thank you. The problem that we have is that I've been tracking the HAB transactions on the SSA.gov official website. And during COVID, I have, I have the order March 1st that the state was shut down for about six weeks. During those six weeks, there were 14,000 transactions. And the definition of HAB is a person who registers, who has no ID, no connection to the local, they get it, they register through the feds, and they're registered to vote. So we were looking at Texas, there's a quarter million a week, every week. And also during the period where the country was shut down. They managed, they managed to register 800,000 voters, only 13,000 in Florida. We got a grand jury indictment that's leading to a second grand jury indictment. And I'm putting you guys on notice to let you know. I don't want to, I want to be civil about this. I know you didn't sign up for this, but this is a huge problem, and it's going to get worse. We're going to have 100 people here next meeting. Jeff Buongiorno, I thank you for your time, guys. And I, I know you didn't sign up for this, and I really feel bad for you.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on a non-agenda item during public comment?
Yes, on a lighter note, Bob Burns. I just wanted to come and commend his chief and Captain John for the enhanced enforcement of rules and regulations that I've seen. And I think that the guys are doing a great job, guys and girls. And I just wanted to come in and say, I let you guys know that at least one citizen thinks that you're doing a hell of a good job. And, and I also want to commend you for the cameras. I think the cameras was money well spent, and I think they are also have done what they're intended to be doing. On another note, I endured the 11 years of the underground. And I know since April 22nd, we've been doing the, the road. I have a dog, and I walk the core, so to speak, every day. And I'm just wondering, from your perspective, I see six guys here one day and nobody the next. And I'm just wondering, from your perspective, are they doing, up to this point, what you expected to be done at this point, or, or what? So that's just one comment that, like I said, I've seen them. We've got the cutting the roads and so on, but I haven't seen a whole lot of stuff going on. So I just thought I'd, I'd ask. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else on a non-agenda item while public comment's still open?
No, I do have two things, and I could speak to what he just said.
Yes.
Because one of them is, we've had two or three residents call because they didn't see an update on the website that they said we're paying so much money for. It's supposed to be updated weekly. So I talked to Rebecca Travis from Baxton Woodman yesterday, and she said that they have been waiting for the de-watering permit. So that's why they have not started on some areas that they were supposed to, and that's why it has not been updated on the website. But starting next Wednesday, they will put pictures and an update, and then it will be every Wednesday that it's updated on the website. So that's why you haven't seen people out there. They're waiting on a permit. And the second thing is PK Murky said if she wasn't here at this meeting for me to mention what she would have liked to have said. And that is, she wants to bring attention to poop bags littering all over the roads. She says they're, they're throwing them in yards. They're, she said it's getting unhealthy, and she just wanted to know if there was anything that could be done about it. She said it's never happened, and all the years she's lived here, and now all of a sudden, they're everywhere.
Are they empty or full?
They're full.
I see, I see.
I've seen them.
I see some empty ones I picked up when you got your roller, and some of them fall out, but they're, okay, that's odd.
Do we know anybody who might be wanting to do this?
I don't see anybody doing it, but there are lots of.
Well, we can, I mean, we're, we're approaching the end of the season, but we can obviously send out a note to everybody. You know, obviously, it's an extremely dog-friendly neighborhood, even with my two raptors, aka corgis.
It might be a one-person thing or two.
We may have to, we also may have to do a little self-policing, too, if it's, you know, not at 7:00 at night or 7:00 in the morning. So, okay, noted. Thank you, Renee. Anyone else would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Going once, going twice, public comments closed. Back to the regular agenda. First up is the application regard to the Gulfstream Golf Club, the town commission sitting as a board of adjustment. Anybody who would like to speak, please be sworn in by the town clerk.
Raise your right hand.
I swear.
Tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, and help you out.
I do. Thank you.
That took my breath away.
And one more quick, anybody had any ex parte communication with regard to this item on the commission? None? Okay, thank you.
For the record, Mark Marsh, Bridges Marsh and Associates. I'm here this morning on behalf of the board and the club membership of the Gulfstream Golf Club to request an extension to the variance that was granted to the club on June 9th last year. And we are going to apply, or we want to follow the criteria, the Town Code Section 16-66-155, or the Procedures for Submitting and Processing Applications, paragraph 15, which addresses the request for extension. As you know, we had a successful approval last June, and the intent was to continue to develop some of the answers and schemes that the club were looking to do. We did commence with that over the summer, but it became very difficult because the majority of the members, and especially the board, were absent and not able to participate. So we had to kind of stall till the fall. When the fall came, as you're all aware, the club was having their centenary celebration. And there was, even though we had developed certain solutions for expansion, there was a feel that we may be ahead of ourselves, and we need to slow down and let the membership and the board concentrate on the celebration. So we did that. Obviously, that had a wonderful celebration. And now we're in the process, again, of working with some of the appointed board members and other membership to revisit some of the program requirements. So it's, what we'd like to do is, as I said, request this extension. The intention is that we will file for a building permit by June 8th of next year to then achieve, you know, the process and keep it moving ahead. You're, as you're aware, I think you're only allowed a one-year extension. So it's now up on the board. It's a responsibility to proceed with, with what they would like to see done as improvements in that time period. So I'm just here to report that and request the extension, and I'll answer any questions that anybody might have.
Sure, so the double tech in the code, I'm sure Trey and Greg can confirm that. You know, ideally, on something like this, you'd probably want a two-year extension, but under the, or the code, it can only be one year.
Yeah, I think that.
I know you're angling to get the building permit by the end of this, this extension.
Yeah, that subject was broached by.
Yeah.
Some of the members, and, yeah, we want to adhere to the ordinance.
Any commissioners have any other comment on the matter?
Can I ask a question? Is, when you ask for this extension, it has to be built as the plans we approved, right?
Yes.
Okay. There could be changes.
Well, let me clarify one thing. There could be addition or alternate modifications made that don't require variance.
Okay.
So this is a variance for the extension of the southwest corner.
Yeah, it's 14 feet into the coastal control construction, rare setback.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We need a motion?
I'll move to, for the one-year extension to the previously approved variance under Town Code 66155.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Green, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda is reports, town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And the first one on here is a CIP update. So I asked Jockey to come up to the podium there. So what I'm going to ask him to do is, there's been a change in the way they are putting the pipe in. As you know, we changed the schedule to start on the north end because we were concerned about the super-high tides in the fall. And it didn't matter because they're running into groundwater, even, you know, at this time of the year. And so we're changing the method of putting the pipe in. And he can give you more details, but the way I understand it is to do it the normal way. They got to dig down about 10 feet. And then this other method is only about three feet.
Well, the, the difference here, the contractor's plan, like the manager mentioned, was to start on the north end of the project. Right-way, old-school are the lower elevations, the lowest elevations within the community, and to get ahead of the king tides coming in the fall. So the contractor attempted to begin that work. But again, the water table is so high in this area that it's making it difficult to install pipes, which are typically done in the dry. So in order to combat that, typically, water mains are installed about three feet below grade in dry conditions. We're going to allow them to bring them up slightly, about a foot or so. And then during the backfilling process, we use a flowable fill, which is a concrete material, which can be excavated in the future should the town need to do any operations, maintenance-type work. So it's a difference in their typical construction method, but it was also included in the cost in the bid items as an additional allowance for flowable fill. So depending on the amount that's used, it should be taken into account in the bid.
So that's really the biggest change that we've made since we started. I mean, we have done the, we've been cutting.
They have gone out and they saw a cut where the future water mains are going to be located so that when they come in with machines, it's easier to excavate. We totally understand, as the gentleman mentioned, you know, the, the slow process of this project has been, you know, a bit of a concern for us as well. We're working with the contractor to, you know, identify the, the process, how we're going to get this project done. Currently, the outfall along right way, the check valve has failed or is allowing water to come in from the intercoastal. So the town is having a, or another company come to repair that valve, which should allow us to isolate the water from coming into the town so that they can do the work along right way. So, you know, there's definitely some issues going on that we are working with the contractor on. And hopefully, once we begin to progress, the, the, basically, the procedures of how they're going to do the construction work will start to smooth out, and the pace will increase.
On the de-watering permit, is that the existing permit we filed for? Or is that a change due to the south side?
So de-watering permit is a little different than the permit to increase our discharge amount. For a de-watering permit is to allow the contractor to,
Yeah.
you know, to pull the water out of the soils and discharge.
We're experts on that in the project in town.
I, I think the question was,
Yeah.
wasn't that something that we anticipated that we were going to need to get?
It's the contractor's responsibility to pull that permit.
Where, so you're going to pump out somewhere with a silt fence to be able to set those pipes on the north end?
Correct. So they have proposed using something that they, the product is called a dirt bag. So you would pump the water through the bag, which is basically a giant filter.
Yeah.
So collect the sediment, and then clean water will, you know, enter into the stormwater system and out into the intercoastal. And then there's a turbidity barrier on the outside of the outfalls in the intercoastal to also prevent plumes from occurring.
Got it, okay. So we think we're close on that from DEP? We don't know.
From, that's from South Florida Water Management District to get the de-watering permit.
I don't know typically how long it takes then.
It's usually within a month or so. I mean, it should be a, a quick process.
Okay. And then they're, they've also been doing what they call potholing.
Right, the potholing contractor before they begin installing utilities, they pothole to find all the existing utilities to make sure there's not going to be a conflict when they install structures. So one of the situations we had on right way is the location of existing forest main. So based on where the existing forest mains versus what the surveyor had picked up for the drawings, we noticed that we could move our inlets from what used to be on the outside of the valley curb, where we would have ramps or channels to flow into those structures. We can now move those structures into the valley gutters, which is typical throughout the neighborhood. So it's actually a positive on right way for that situation. But again, you know, that's what the contractor is doing, is potholing to find all these utilities so that they know where conflicts are going to be.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other questions from the commission on this item? All right.
The next item under.
Yeah, we have the ad hoc committee update.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So we recently had our third meeting on April 25th. Our running list of items that we're trying to look into from the previous meeting on April 8th, we're building setbacks, second-floor setbacks, roof heights, and mapping our overlay districts. Overlay districts that they've identified are east of Polo and along Gulfstream Road in the core. So a lot of those, those dry lots. And then also acknowledging that there is that, the alleyway in the rear that sort of provides some, some additional space to perhaps reduce setbacks without really any difference between those lots and lots that don't have that alleyway. So again, just looking into that. On our April 25th meeting, we had Mr. Marsh, one of his, another architect in his office, and Gary Eliopoulos as well, talking about a number of different items that the ad hoc committee were interested in. A lot of the discussion out of that included, perhaps, looking at the potential for historic structures. The Town of Palm Beach zoning code has what's called angle of vision. So that's essentially, as you're standing and looking at the property, how high it is based on the angle. And I guess from the road, that would include the finished floor. So that would seem to be a good way to, to regulate massing. So they're very interested in finding out more about that. Also, it was discussed maybe having an earlier pre-application conference or something that's more comprehensive than currently what's in our code. Increase maximum lot coverage for one-story homes. Increase allowance of covered unenclosed floor area for one-story homes. A minimum front yard landscape percentage that would prohibit, sort of, scale back some of these large driveways and, and those areas. Increase height for entry features applicable to all structures. I think that's something that we've seen really universally. I think that's something that we've seen really universally. If you have a certain entry feature with a railing to allow sort of a balcony on the front of the structure, it's prohibitive the way our code reads, so increasing that by maybe six inches or a foot. And then we're going to try to identify current structures that the committee believes preserve the character of the core district and see how those relate to the criteria that we've spoken about. So that's really the update. We have another meeting after the commission meeting today, so we're going to talk about those items and that's just kind of where we are. The chairman, Paul Lyons, has indicated that nothing's really off the table, so we're discussing all these items with a hope to have some sort of a suggestion coming up soon. Also, on that agenda will be a discussion about the process to conclude the ad hoc committee with the liberals' deliverables to the town's ARPB. So trying to determine, okay, we have a lot of great ideas, how are we going to synthesize that down and make a recommendation? So it's been a very active process with meetings every other week, certainly a lot of work and I appreciate everyone for their, their work on that committee and hopefully we'll have something really positive that comes out of that.
And also I'll just add that, I believe, Mr. Nizaro and myself and perhaps Renee would like to take a visit to the town of Palm Beach to, so that we can better understand how this angle of vision works from their planning department.
Any other comments from the commission on the progress here? So it still sounds like we're trying to stay away from complex formulas if we can help it, other than, other than the sight line.
Sure.
Sight line matter.
Right, the cubic content is something that was discussed. There was a lot of, you know, negative commentary about that, how difficult and complex it is. You know, the chairman did mention that just because it's difficult doesn't mean that we shouldn't look into it, but he also believed the angle of vision would probably be an easier way to resolve that because you really are looking at massing from the street and if your angle prohibits a certain height just by adding on the finished floor and everything and effectively increasing that setback so it's further away from the road, reducing the massing, just that, that angle of vision would seem to really address that, that issue from the, from the street.
Yeah, so it seems to me this would add on what another couple of pages to the, to the plan submitted to the town and then also may make the 3D rendering, which some architects do and some don't, a little more valuable, you know. Okay. Next, thank you. Next up, architectural review and planning board meetings, you've got the dates, May through September, there's no August meeting.
There is also no meeting in May. We didn't have any applications, so we have canceled that meeting. Yes, but I do have, we have had some pre-acts, so I'm looking for a June meeting.
So we're looking at June 27th and possibly July 25th.
Yes.
Any questions, call the town clerk. Finance director.
Yes, sir. The balance sheet and budget report for you represents 58% of the budget, nothing unusual in it. I will say that we are, we are beginning to, seems like it comes sooner and sooner every year, but we're beginning to work on and collect information for our 2425 budgets as we speak.
Correct, great. Police chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I've submitted a report, I asked that you accept it as drafted. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Obviously, as folks begin to travel a little more, some activity has increased and other areas has decreased, but again, I'll answer any questions you have if you haven't.
Any questions for the chief with regard to the summer plans and controlling? All right, he's got it under control. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Items for commission action, Boynton Beach water agreement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, so I'll just draw your attention to the memo dated May 8th from the manager. It does talk about all the progress that's been made over the past year or more. We've been working very closely with the utilities director of Boynton Beach and they've provided a lot of information that was part of the packet. At this point, the, the agreement is not ready to be finalized, but due to a current project that we want to put procure as part of our phase one of our water line, we are asking that the commission authorize an expenditure for $52,333, which is the engineering cost for the, the phase one design. That would be incorporated into an agreement later on as part of the projected costs. If you look at the spreadsheet, it does have $50,000 in engineering costs, $2 million worth of construction. The information from the city of Boynton Beach puts that at about $1.8 million with a wonderful swing of 1.3 to 2.3 million dollars anticipated, but the best estimate that they can provide at this point is 1.8. And then also in that is a $400,000, I believe it's capacity facility fee that would either be paid at one time that we could take out a loan for or we could pay annually one-fifth over the first five years, which is a discussion that I've had with Mr. Mack, the assistant director there, and Ms. Calcat, the utilities director. So at this point, I just ask if there are any questions, otherwise like a motion for approval to reimburse the phase one engineering study.
Perfect, but just for the residents, can you, in like one or two sentences, it's more likely than not with all the work we're doing, we're kind of head in this direction, which is why we're doing the reimbursement and moving forward. I mean, you already said the agreement's pending, but.
No, absolutely. So with, I think maybe two months ago, we traded a draft agreement, so that has all been in, in the progress. When I asked the assistant, assistant manager, Andrew Mack, in our meeting a few weeks ago, I said, what, what is the feeling from your commission? He said, no, we've been doing a lot of work on this, it's, it's going to get passed, obviously no one has a crystal ball, but the amount of work the utilities department has been doing to add on an additional engineering study, incorporate that and get the quote from the engineering team, try to figure out what the, whether they have capacity, what the, what the rate would be, all these different things. I mean, there is a significant amount of work that's been going on from the city to, to bring into town as a customer. So based on all of those efforts, you know, it's pretty clear that they, they want to bring us on as a customer and generate some additional revenue. And then of course, there will be cost savings to the town over time with some immediate benefits as well.
Any other questions on the matter of the motion for us from the commission? Need a motion to approve?
I also just wanted to make a comment that I think last week, Mr. Nizaro, myself and Mr. Bymaster sat down with the Seacoast Bank to begin to, as you already know, that we are anticipating perhaps financing in, in our 2425 budget, which of course we're getting ready to put together right now. And so we sat down with them and talked about financing, perhaps a loan or even perhaps some kind of a line of credit, but I thought we had a, a good upbeat meeting with them, but I just wanted to let you know that we're reaching out in anticipation of our budget for 25, all the while knowing that the town commission does not want us to go below $4 million in our fund balance.
So you're going to reach out to other banks too to get?
Well, we, we had a conversation with the Florida League of Cities and they, they looked at our, at our budgets and their suggestion was that we should at least initially reach out to our, to our bank that is our depositor.
So at that point, we can look and see what rate they're offering versus what the rates are on the market to determine whether or not that would be beneficial to us.
I just went not.
No, absolutely, yes. And it's also been suggested that with some people in town that they may be interested in looking into that as well, which we would obviously be happy to provide them with any information and welcome their input as well.
Okay.
Okay, motion on the table.
Motion to approve reimbursing study of Boynton Beach for $52,333 for phase one water main interconnection engineering services.
Second, roll call please.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Campfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes. Next item is 10B civil engineering consultants, additional engineering services, core area improvements.
Yes, Mr. Jockey, so as you can see, this, this would represent an amendment to our contract with the engineers, really related to two, two issues. The original, the original plan for replacing water mains, was it strictly pipe bursting?
No, mainly pipe bursting in the lower areas along the fingers, Polo Drive and a little bit on Gulfstream, but there was a significant amount of direct bury also.
Yeah, so as it turns out, the pipe bursting where a lot of that was located is our, is located under vegetation.
Right, it's under vegetation or right adjacent to the right of way line and.
So it's going to become a maintenance problem, issue in the future, especially the ones that were located underneath, underneath existing and very mature vegetation that over the years was planted in or right of way or close to it and has grown into it. So, so we made a decision to, rather than to do that, and I also think that the, the contractor had an issue in finding.
Correct, the contractor had an issue finding a subcontractor to do the pipe bursting utilizing the C900 PVC pipe. There is a contractor that utilizes HDPE pipe, which is a typical material for fusing and pipe bursting, but it's also difficult for operations and maintenance to maintain that pipe because it's not a easily, you know, parts aren't easily found to do service connections for fixes, things like that. So there was a bit of conflicting.
Right, so, so in those areas, we decided to put the pipe, move the pipe back out into the roadway. Now, the issue with this is the, the amount of money that, that this amendment would realize to do that is offset by the savings in the contract with the contractor. To put it in the road was cheaper than to do the pipe bursting. So that's basically a wash on that one.
Correct.
The other one was related to the width of some of the roadways in the final plan. And basically, the main ones are old school in Banyan, west of Polo. The plan called for those to be 18 feet wide and the staff and, and you guys drive by those two streets every day. Those are the worst streets in, in the core area in terms of ruts. And, and so we, the staff suggested that, and we wanted to be consistent that all of our roads in this project will be 20 feet and all of Polo is 20 feet at this point in time. And so we made that recommendation to, to make those roads that were 18 feet, 20 feet. And so that's what this second change represents. I mean, we, I know you do and I do too, get tired of seeing all those roads north of Palm Way.
We need a motion to approve, Trey?
Oh, yes, we do.
So we need a motion to approve the provisions pursuant to the civil engineering amendment as presented, contract amendment.
I'll move. Did you want that?
Second, roll call please.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Campfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes. 10C, items by mayor commissioners, anything for the, go to the order here. Going once, going twice, okay, thank you all, the meeting is adjourned.